Wow, that's loud in there.
(laughing)
Really loud. Yeah.
(inaudible).
So we'll call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting for August 18th. Can we get a roll call, please?
Diane?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Foster? Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Yes. Here.
Okay. Just a reminder for the council members, if you're not speaking, please mute your mic. And anybody else that's on the eight-by-eight meeting, please mute your mic. All right, everybody that can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
(inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic of which is fans, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, next item is the correction and/or approval of the city county, city council meeting minutes of August 4th, 2020. Do I have a motion of adoption as written?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Fritsch and a second by, uh, by Steve. Okay? Let's call the vote, please, or call the roll call. Vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
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 Diane?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion, Task 5-0.
All right. That moves us into correspondence. I guess, who would like to start? Would you like to start, Diane? Do you have anything from correspondence?
I think I got the same correspondence as everybody else did, which was, I didn't get any phone correspondence, but I did get one phone call, but they did a follow-up with an email. So, uh...
Mrs. Fritsch, could you turn your mic down?
Oh. There we go. There we go. Um, so I, I... Not prepared to tell me, tell the names of all the people, but I got several calls. So, um, most of them had to do with tonight's agenda.
You received one call from my neighbor down at, uh, (inaudible) called the golf cart. And then I had, um, several emails on the bike path.
Okay. Let's try this again. Vicki, Ms. Schmidt, do you have anything for correspondence?
Oh, I had about five or six emails, and they all had to do with Tyranina Park and the bike trails.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Fritsch?
I had, I had plenty of... I had plenty of emails, uh, came through. Tyranina Park.
Okay. Um, I had the same. Most, uh, most of my correspondence this week was stuff from, uh, Tyranina Park, so we can move on from there. Um, we're gonna move into questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight, but it's, it's on a Sidewalk Cafe. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So the folks that are in this room that are gonna speak, and if you're here for the Tyranina stuff, this will be your time right now to speak. And if, w- once we get into the agenda item, if we have some other questions, we may suspend the rules. But if you're here for that, uh, this will be your time. Try to keep it to three minutes. And for anybody that is on the virtual meeting that would like to speak on this, we'll, uh, we'll ask you to fill in your information in the chat session bef- uh, before or after you start speaking. So with that, we are in questions and public comment, so you're free to step up to the podium and try to keep your comments to three minutes if you can, and we'll, uh, we'll go
I think someone will need to, um, turn on that iPad.
Is it off?
It should be off. It's, it's at least muted and, and the screen is shut off.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, great. Uh, good evening, city council members and staff. My name is Lisa Kurler. I live at 369 West Prospect Street, and I'm here to talk tonight about Tyranina Park, which is such a gem in our city. Um, since I moved to Lake Mills 13 years ago, I've enjoyed hiking and wildlife watching at the park, and I volunteered to do spring cleanups and invasive plant removal over the years. Adding mountain biking trails is a significant change to the park, and I believe that should have triggered a planning process where citizens had a chance to provide input before changes occurred. Tonight, you have a motion, you're being asked to approve a new use in new trails that have already been built, and there's no trail map or park rules, um, in your motion. I would ask you instead to sponsor a planning process where a variety of park users can work together to develop a community plan that represents everyone's interests and that includes park rules and a map and signs that would address safety and habitat preservation. And I'd be happy to be a part of that process. Um, I do wanna recognize Tony Cook and all the, uh, many volunteers who donated a lot of hours constructing new trails. I appreciate their efforts to expand the park interest, improve trails, remove invasive species. Unfortunately, they constructed trails beyond what the original Parks Board approved back in January of 2019. This year, at the Parks Board meeting in June, uh, there were a lot of local citizens and biking enthusiasts from other communities who came and spoke in favor of the trails. Uh, there were other citizens, including me, that asked the Parks Board to hold up, hold off on trail development, um, and seek input from other users on a plan so that , uh, safety and habitat concern could be addressed. So I wanna be clear that I'm okay with adding mountain biking in Tyranina Park, but I don't support the proposed motion or completion of any trails that are not yet constructed. Um, the motion basically approves everything after the fact, and it is missing, um, some important details because there's not a map to make sure that everyone's clear on what trails are existing and what no further expansion means. Um, and it doesn't include any park rules for safety or a plan for signs. So instead of approving this motion, I would ask the city council to sponsor a planning process where, uh, local citizens can work together on a community since all the users' interests. If you decide to move ahead on this motion, then I would respectfully request that you would add a condition that requires the Parks Board and staff to prepare a map of the existing completed trails, to establish some rules and signage, and then to bring those items back to the city council for your approval so that all the details of what you're approving would be clear for everyone.
All right.
Hi, I'm Patricia Cicero with the, um, I live at 517 College Street. And my glasses are gonna fall out. I understand that the Parks Board approved mountain bike trails in the parks in 2019. The map presented at that meeting has a few proposed additions to the existing trails in the park. In the spring of 2020, I started getting a lot of calls from concerned citizens about the amount of bike trails being built in the park. That's when I started doing research, and I found out that more trails have been built in the park than what was contained in that 2019 map, and there was no record of additional trails being approved. I also found out that the city council should have approved this large change to this nature-based park prior to any work being done to build the mountain bike trails. So it's unfortunate that the city now has to make a decision after the fact. I encourage you to think about this issue as if it were brand-new. What would you wanna see at Tyranina Park if you were given the chance prior to any new trails being built? And how would you wanna make your decision? What information would you want? I know if I was in your shoes, I would want a map showing specifically what's being proposed, um, and it, because that's gonna help the decision-makers and the public know what's being proposed and be able to provide comment on those maps. I'd also wanna see a proposed set of rules for this new usage of the park. And this development of rules are really important when it comes to public parks because they help avert any issues or park conflicts that might come up. I'd also want information from all the park users to know how a new use at the park will impact their park enjoyment. Information from experts is another thing that I would want, to make sure that the new use, um, how it's gonna impact the park and the natural setting of the park. So none of this information you have tonight, in the proposed motion, it states that existing Tyranina Park trails constructed by local volunteers may be, may be used with no further of the trail. I know from attending the June Parks meeting, um, that there's been a question about what existing means. Does it mean trails that were partially started but not commit, completed? And part of my research, I contacted Kevin Weisman. He's the Parks Supervisor with Jefferson County, who has a lot of experience with trails and trail development. And after he viewed the trails at Tyranina Park, he stated that there were more trails there than should be for the size of the park. I also know from talking to other experts is that the extent of the mountain bike trails have negatively impacted the habitat and the wildlife. And for this, these reasons, I don't wanna see any partially-built mountain bike trails be allowed to be completed. As one Parks Board member said at one of the meetings, it was not their intent, uh, to have a mountain bike park. Instead, it was their intent to have a park with some mountain bike trails in it. Uh, let's talk about rules for a little bit. It's always been stated, um, that these mountain bike trails are multi-use. I, I don't know how many of you have gone out and walked the trails, but I know when I have, there's several locations that I was scared that there might be a biker coming around the corner or over a hill because it was a blind corner and a blind hill, and I, it would have been hard to prevent a collision. So I'm not sure that the bike trails, all of them should be multi-use, and I think it needs to be assessed whether some should be just for the bike trails and some just for, um, hikers, or maybe there's combineds. So I think there should more time spent on rules and figuring out what the rules should be. Rules on trail use, hours, and other considerations should be determined, and I think, again, that would be something that would go into your decision-making process. As you've heard from Lisa, I know that there's several other people who have proposed a planning process where various park users, like mountain bikers, walkers, fishermen, nature watchers, dog walkers, have the opportunity to come together to consider and make recommendations about the future of Tyranina Park. I also know that some of the citizens, such as Lisa, have already volunteered to help if, if this process is put forward. Please take them up on this offer. I have always found that decisions are better made once there are diverse interests working together. It is wonderful that so many citizens of the city of Lake Mills care so deeply about Tyranina Park. Please work with them to help determine a bright and sustained future for the park. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will close questions and public comment and move on to the city manager's Steve, you're muted. There you are.
I provided several documents for you. The first one is the John's Contract Extension Proposal. Uh, you get a chance to read that and see that. That's coming up at the end of the year. Will be part of the budget. It should be dealt with at the first meeting in September because if we decide to do, um, an RFP, it'll take me that long. I have the document completed. It's ready to go, but to get it out, advertise, bids in and review it and, and ready for the budget, it would need to be done in mid-September. So, um, there was a Sandy Beach, um, Chippewa MOA that, um, was finally, came through, and I signed it and returned it, and there was a copy of that provided. Um, I provided the memo on the Rock Lake Activity Center Special Revenue Fund Proposal. So if anybody, that's for your information, if you want to put it on an agenda, one of the council members will need to sponsor that to go on the agenda. I also provided a city manager's memo on TID number eight. TID number eight is virtually complete except for completion at the council level. Um, there were, it happened during that heat of the COVID, and there were some issues related to the proposal, uh, that I mentioned. Um, so if you guys wanna look at that again, make a determination if you wanna change it, or if you wanna drop it, or if you wanna leave it as-is, uh, those are options there. But if we're gonna do TID number eight, we need to do it, um, soon because we have to have all the documentation in by, uh, October 1st. I provided the capital budget and the general fund budget for June, uh, and then the check register. Are there any other questions?
And we could talk about this later, but I would like to see TID eight on an agenda item.
Okay. That, well, that's, you get to make, you get to make the agendas, so, um, if you want it on, it'll go on. If, uh, one of the council, one of the other council members asks you to put on the Rock Lake Activity one, that's, that's the same. That's not on quite as tight of a schedule as, as, um, TID number eight and the John's Contract, but it, if we're gonna do it in the, um, for the 21-year, we need to have it included as part of the, the 21-budget proposals, which will have to be finalized on November 5th, or the first meeting in November.
Yeah.
Um, I did wanna mention that, um...
I was gonna say, I'd look for someone to, uh, volunteer, and that's why I thought Doug would volunteer for the Arlac Special Revenue Fund. So we can get that on an agenda item.
I did wanna note that, um... Go ahead, Diane.
I was going to say, um, I haven't looked at the John's Budget yet, but I wondered if it included the, the second pickup for recycling that we talked about or not?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
It doesn't, but he has made an offer to include that if we want that.
So, do we have to talk about that with the council and...
Yep.
I mean, I don't know how, how to approach that.
Yeah, we do.
We need it on an agenda.
Yep, exactly.
This is just the city manager's report, and it gives you an opportunity to look at it and know that we're gonna have it on the next agenda, um, and so that we can discuss it at that point in time because we need to make decisions in that regard. Brian John Genus will, I'm sure, will be at that meeting or one of his representatives, and they can answer those questions for you about, you know, I think, um, Mike has already run some questions by them about the extra pickup and the electronics pickup, and they have provided some information to, uh, to us on that. But this is the basic contract proposal. If we wanna make some other proposals, um, I'm sure that they're willing to listen and give you an idea of what it's gonna cost.
So should I, should I ask at this point to put it on the next agenda to discuss?
You can.
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
All right. We can bring it up at the end of the meeting, too.
At the end, yep.
Okay, I'll try to remember to do that.
The, um, I wanted to let you know that Mud, Mud Lake Road, the, um, water sewer, storm sewer sidewalks and curb and gutter are done. They're laying gas this weekend, preparing the base, and next week they'll lay asphalt. So probably in the first week in September, Mud Lake Road will be done. You will probably see houses starting down there within a week after that. Um, so, but we basically have South Main Street done and Mud Lake Road and County Highway A down there done. I did wanna mention, um, that we are going to be doing the restoration work on Ballberry with city staff, probably starting in mid-September. Um, we're gonna send the Neighborhood Service Officer around to contact the residents to discuss any issues that they have and try and figure out how we're gonna handle that. Most of it's gonna be done with, uh, um, a spray-on seed fertilizer herbicide. Uh, some of it will have to go in and do restoration. There was one area where we had proposed to move a couple trees at the owner's request and level the area out. That'll definitely take some, some landscaping. There are a couple areas that were under trees that were really bad, so, um, we'll go through, but we're gonna try and do it as cost-effective as possible with as little disturbance as possible. Other than that, I'm done.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? Hearing nothing, we will move on to number eight, acceptance of the minutes of the Public Works Board of March 10th, 2020. They'll go on record as written. And moves us into council business. So item A is a public hearing, so we will move into the public hearing section for the Sidewalk Cafe license, Pyramid Event View, 117th South Main Street. So we are now in public hearing. Do we have anybody that would like to speak concerning the public hearing? Or do, uh, Dan, do you have anything on this before we ask folks to come up?
Uh, no, not really.
Steve, do you have anything?
I do not. You may wanna ask Misty. She's the one that reviews these primarily.
Okay. Misty, third time's the charm.
Um, no, I don't have anything, um, besides what I provided to you. They provided an application as well as, um, a drawing of what they're planning.
So I didn't see a drawing. Did anybody else see a drawing?
No.
I did. It was a, there was a sketch on the 38.
There was a sketch on the 38.
The, the private application? And...
I've only got a notice, oh, that's, okay, I'm sorry.
It's in the licenses rather than the hearing.
It's in the, it's in the next section. Sorry about that. I did see a picture. Forget what I said.
I believe they had like a five-foot wide blockway.
With the fencing.
Between the curb and their fence.
I just had a question for Misty and/or somebody. Does the space that's allowed, I couldn't really tell from the drawing, meet the...
Yeah, let's wait till we get, yeah.
Oh, wait till we get into the public hearing.
Wait till we get out of the public hearing, excuse me. Okay, so this is the public hearing portion. Is there anybody online that would like to speak to the Sidewalk Cafe? No, it's looking like we have Patricia coming up again. You coming up to talk?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanna, uh, again, Patricia Cicero, 517 College Street. I, I feel that the Pyramid Event venue space has done a really great job at opening during a really horrible time to open a new business, and I feel when I've gone there that they have done everything that they can to, um, protect everybody coming to their... And an outdoor space for them is, is definitely, would be a, a great improvement to, um, have more options for people to, uh, enjoy going to that venue, so I'm in support of, uh, allowing them to have an outdoor space.
Thank you.
I'd also like to bring up one more thing, um, that at this point, the applicant has not put in a request to amend their liquor license premises, so if this is approved right now, this would just be for food, not alcohol. It is my understanding they'll be bringing that request at a later time. They missed bringing it in to get it on this agenda. So it's, it's still two different things.
Okay, we are still in public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Anybody online? Okay, hearing nothing, we will close the public hearing. Move on to, uh, item B, miscellaneous licenses, Sidewalk Cafe license for the Pyramid. Is there supposed to be...
This is just under miscellaneous licenses. There's not a, uh, prepared motion if you'd, someone would like to make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
It does follow the code. They would have to, so...
Perfect. Do, do, I would entertain a motion of adoption for this private Sidewalk Cafe application by Pyramid. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll so move.
Okay, that was, Mr. Fritsch, do we have a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
And that was Diane. Is there any other discussion about this item? Now you can ask your question.
Now, can I ask my question?
Yep.
Yeah, so is there enough room, according to our ordinance, uh, for this to be where it's located, for people to walk by and stuff? Diane, your microphone.
The ordinance requires that there's a minimum of 60 inches, five feet, that is unobstructed at all times. Uh, their exhibit shows that. I personally haven't been out there with a tape measure or anything like that. At that point, there, there is a limited amount of space there. Uh, there are, uh, restaurants that are directly north of them that have a Sidewalk Cafe license that I think are pretty similarly situated. So if we're relying on their map, they've shown that there is adequate space to maintain that minimum of 60 inches, and that's ADA. That's what's required, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none and hearing none, let's go ahead and call... All right, seeing none and hearing none, let's go ahead and call roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, we're on item C, discussion decision on Tyranina Park bike trails. Could I get the title read for that motion, please?
City Council Motion Twenty-eight-two-one Approving a Recommendation from the Parks Board Regarding Bike Trails in Tyranina Park.
All right, at this point, I would entertain an adoption, a motion of adoption.
Also move. Also move.
Mr. Fields, do we have a second? I will second it so we can have some discussion. All right, so that moves us into discussion on this item. I know we've received a lot of comments from both the citizens, and we did receive the information from the Parks Board. And my take is we should probably hear from Mr. Getz, but I want to leave this open to you, Steve, Mr. Fields, to give us some insight onto this because you're part of the Parks Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on this, and we appreciate a lot of the public input we've had on this. I know the Park Board, when we did approve this or look at this at the very beginning, it was about getting kids out in the parks, getting them involved, just more citizens involved. And in a lot of ways, I've heard from a lot of parents that it's been a blessing in disguise with the whole COVID, that this has given them a lot of places to go out and get rid of some energy and let them, you know, enjoy the park system, which I think our intent was accomplished. Is everything perfect in how we went about it? Possibly not, but I think the intent is working. I think a lot of the feedback I've had even from some of the folks here is let's not expand it, but keep it for the kids and for the everyday recreational people. A lot of people say they still walk to trails. So, our recommendation from the Parks Board was let's approve it as it stands without moving forward with additional trail system until we have a little bit more input and the council can make a decision on it.
Yes.
You only get Mike. No pictures of me. Start off with the Park Board at their June meeting, July meetings, we've gone for many hours reviewing emails, people coming to speak. They did an incredible check discussing this issue, coming up with a rather good motion. I hope all of you watched the video, I sent a memo of June Park Board meeting. I also sent seventy-four page of emails that I received. A lot of material to go through. So, you know, Park Board just didn't do it quickly. They looked at it and worked. All right, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Park Board did spend a lot of time developing and getting this motion. The Park Board did discuss having like an ad hoc committee. I'm getting a lot of feedback, sorry. Yeah, it's terrible. Their decision and discussion was regarding more of that's what their job is. You know, you do have a Park Board, and if you're not going to let them make park decisions, why are we going to have a Park Board then? Then for every decision that's coming in front of council, then just make a separate committee for it. So, they did discuss that quite heavily in that. There is GIS mapping of the trail system up there. After our June meeting, city staff did go up and do a GIS mapping. We had them do it once. We're waiting to see what happens with this. It's no sense in putting a lot of time and effort into something that may be scrapped. So, we do have the basics for it, so now we can start building on that, and that's in the motion as far as fine tuning it, being able to identify what trails you are potentially walking trails, what trails can be eliminated, you know, things like that. So, that is there. I presented the GIS mapping to the Park Board at their July meeting. I also presented them with just a made-up potential trailhead sign of rules and regulations. Park Board feels that's part of their job to start developing that kind of thing. They've discussed having meetings out there, doing that kind of thing. So, I think Park Board wants to be very much involved in this, and I believe that's what their job is.
Yeah. I would like to make, okay, I would just like to comment because some of the emails, people thought that the council made the decisions that this was. And I want to clarify for the record to everybody that the council did not see this. That the council didn't say yes, the council didn't say no. I didn't even know it had happened until people were calling me who were concerned about the bikes in the park. And I told them there aren't supposed to be bikes in the park because I didn't even know that the Parks Board had made that decision. So, I want to make sure people understand that nothing was done behind their back because we didn't know about it. And I have other comments that I'd like to make, but I don't need to make them at this point. I can take them, you know, but that was the big one I wanted everybody to know. We had a breakdown in our communication in the city. It should have come to the council because it was a change in the workings of the park, but it didn't. And so now we have to deal with the present situation.
Thank you, Diane. Does anybody else have any other discussion?
I'd like to know, has the Parks Board talked about possibly trying to establish a different area for the bike trails? Maybe on some other city land that we could develop into a park trail because there certainly seems to be a demand for it. I've looked at the trails, and over the years I've been here, I've used them, and I think I'm real pleased with the amount of participation the parks have taken and is generating the park and the other parks. But I'm wondering, since there seems to be a demand and there is basically, unfortunately, a question of liability and safety, I'm wondering if down the road we need to take and start trying to take and maybe separate the functions of the, of Tyranina Park from the bikes with the walkers and the swimmers and all the picnickers and so on in the park. I don't know. But that's, was there any discussion of that?
There was, and there's been talk about the future of possibly migrating them to a new location once new property is brought in. And now as far as the issue of liability, the city doesn't have that liability. We're, how do you want to put it? We're almost exempt from immunity. Yeah.
In certain circumstances. I would definitely suggest posting a notorious particular sign.
Yep.
And posting a reasonable rules. Who's at your own risk, you know, whether it's a lot of community having a volunteer sign, whatever, et cetera. But generally, we do give some form of qualified.
Yeah, qualified immunity. That's it. Yeah. So, I've been thinking about this as I've been getting all these different emails and asking for different, maybe committees and things like that. And my first thoughts went to exactly what Rob said. You know, that's what our board is for. That's what they're there for us. They are our eyes and ears, and they're our referring entity to bring those items to us, and they do have that authority to set up their own ad hoc committees to actually get with citizens and figure out best uses of those parks. But then it's their job, responsibility to bring that to the city council. And he was right that if, you know, if we were as a council to say we want to have another committee on this, we would sort of be saying we don't trust you to do your job. And I don't think anybody wants to really say that. I don't think anybody deserves to hear that because that's what they're there for, and I think they're doing a darn good job. We had a lapse in judgment for one item that I know about here. But it looks like all the items that have been addressed in the different emails that we've received is the data has either been provided for us, or we have examples of what it's going to encompass signs and other postings and rules and things like that. So, I think they've truly thought of it, and it does sound like, you know, they've gone through meeting after meeting on this. The only thing they hadn't done is set up some type of an ad hoc committee to actually get a formal response for them to use in their decision-making process, which it's in their ability. They can do that if they want to, but they don't have to. So, I guess I'll stop right there. I understand all the concerns. I understand where we're at with this, and I understand that some of the things that you've asked for, we do have that stuff available right now, at least in some shape or form. So, maps of what's there and what's currently being groomed by Tony and his team, and then setting the rules and then posting signs and things like that. So, I'll stop right there. Does anybody else have anything else that they would like to add? Vicky, do you have anything?
I'm a little bit concerned that the Parks Board approved a preliminary plan for the bike trails, but then the bike trails were built beyond what was approved. So, if we go ahead and approve this after the fact, what assurance do we have that the beginnings of the expansions that got stopped aren't going to be completed? I think that needs to be made explicit in the motion in some fashion, or the Parks Board needs to have better oversight over what's going on in those trails so that we don't come back six months from now and find out that, oh, the trails got expanded because they were already begun and we didn't make it clear when we passed this motion. And so, there would be some discrepancy between what is an existing trail and what is an expanded trail. I would be a lot more comfortable with if there is mapping already being done, if the map, when we approve the motion, is actually attached to the motion so that it's concrete and we all know what it is that got approved. I don't know why we couldn't table this until that extra information is made available and attached. And I think the rules for how the facility is going to function also should be attached. The Park Board could certainly work on those things, but I think before it comes back to the council for its final approval, we need to have those things attached to our motions so that we know for sure and it's not a being targeted.
Sounds good. So, is that an amendment you're going to request?
Yeah, I moved that the motion be amended to provide that the Park Board finalize what is the map going to look like and what are the rules going to say, and that those be attached, that those be approved by the Park Board and then sent back to us for our final approval.
Okay. You got that? Whoever's writing the notes, Dan, you writing that? Okay. Is there a second for this amendment?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Diane.
Diane.
Okay.
Can I speak to the motion?
You sure can.
Okay. I hope that the intent that Vicky was sharing was the original Park Board trails because from what I understand, the Park Board approved a map showing trails and that that's what they understood was going to be done. I would like to clarify that that's the map that should be included is what that, what those trails were because those are the only trails that have been approved by the Parks Board. And if there are other trails since then, they're not approved and they're not supposed to be there because the Park Boards did not approve that. So, I guess that's a question for Vicky is, was that what your intent was that it'd be the original motion of the Parks Board?
No, I guess I'm being more realistic. I understand that more got built and completed than was originally approved, but we kind of have it now. And if they can establish that the expansion is not going to go beyond what is there and completed at this point, and we have some good mapping, I would be willing to have it be as is and maybe come back for a review in a year to make sure that things are working appropriately.
Okay, well, then I guess I disagree with the intent of the motion then because I don't believe that there should be trails other than what the Park Board approved, made or not made. I mean, it's like the old adage is don't ask to do it, ask after you've done it. Well, I don't like running Lake Mills that way. I think if they wanted more trails, it should have been on the original proposal and not done and then comes, oh gee, you know, we didn't remember that we didn't have that on the map. We have a lot of people in Lake Mills who were concerned about the animals that have been displaced. They're concerned about the flowers that have been displaced. They're dis, they're concerned about the safety, like was mentioned during public comment about people walking. And now they have to make sure they don't get hit by a bike. So I guess I, I think it should be the original Park Board decision.
Okay, so does that mean you're removing or pulling your second from the motion that Vicky has, has presented?
Yeah, I guess I am.
Okay. So we still have the amended motion out there with, from what Vicky says. Do we have a second for that?
I will, I will second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and this will be to get the map and all the posting examples. How do I want to put this? Based on the, based on the trails as they exist right now. Does that, that make sense, Vicky?
As long as what we're talking about is existing trails are the ones that were completed and not started, but not completed.
Yes, existing completed. Okay, existing completed.
Yeah, and if, if I could make another attachment to my motion, that it should come back for review in a year so that we can stay on top of this.
Okay.
And see how it's going.
Yep, you sure can. Does that fit with your second? Okay.
Can you verbalize that, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Before we vote on this, Rob, do you have any concerns with providing that information or the Parks Board providing that information?
No, not at all. But one thing I want to get clear is when Tony originally came to propose the trail, it was just a concept. He, you know, he wasn't physically up there in the wintertime walking this area. He did it off of, you know, Google Maps and had an idea, this is what we'd like to do. He came with the concept of the Park Board at that time. That's kind of what the original mapping was. You know, if you take a look at the original mapping, the mapping that, that we have on GSI right now, you know, there's more obviously, but it's not that far off. You know, the intent of some of it is the intent for little kids. You need to have a flat area for the little kids to ride their bikes. We should need to have closer trails together. Thus, on the original mapping, he had no idea at that time that he was going to make this, this for smaller kids to ride on where they can't go up and down the big hills. So yeah, so the trails did get a little bit bigger, but there's reasons for that. There's not a lot of trails that are like half-built or all that. It's, it's very apparent. I think Tony roughly too that might be, you know, but it, it's very clear to me and Tony, what is an existing trail? If you go up there with me, I can walk it with you and say, this is an existing trail. That's, you know, an idea of a trail or a, a, a path that they think they might have one. So that's very clear of what is a trail and what is not.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we will want to call a roll call vote on the amendment.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields? Dan?
No, no, no.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four one.
Okay, so that was with the amendment. So with that being said, it sounds like you would also like to make a motion to table this until that data is ready. Is that correct, Vicky?
Yes, I make a motion to table the amended motion.
Okay, and we really don't have a, to set a date because I'm assuming we can probably have that by next meeting? Two weeks?
I think it, whenever they can have it.
Whenever we decide to pull it off.
Right, because the Parks Board would have to have that all developed and it's, we have to go with their timetable.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking at Rob when I asked that, so sorry about that. You couldn't see me. Okay, so we have a motion to table, motion twenty dash.
Before we, before we vote on that, can I just say that?
My mic won't stay on. There it is. I just want to say that I think we have a need for the biking, but I think there are better places in Lake Mills for it. And I have had some discussions with Steve Wilkie about some other locations. And I was particularly interested in the email from Michael, I'm not sure, Rep. Yeh, the Director of Planning and Design from the International Mountain Biking Association. Because in his email, he gave diagrams of all the things that are supposed to be in these parks. And I think we could make a better bike trail for the people, the young people in our town than the existing one because it is small. Tyranina is, and bikes take space. So I'm not against biking, but I am against having it in Tyranina Park. So I just wanted to say that before we tabled it.
All right, thank you for that. Not yet. I'm looking for a second to table this until the Parks Board is able to put the information together. Do we have a second to table?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Doug will second it. All right. Hold on one second. Since we already have this on the a motion and a second, can we suspend the rules now before we vote on this to allow the question? We understand your concern. We understand it. So we, we know, we know you did it in volunteer time and we understand that. So, right. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to table this. Go ahead and call the vote, vote please.
Mr. Fields?
No, no.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four one.
All right, so this motion was tabled until the Parks Board is able to put that information back together for us. Then we'll bring this back and take it off the table. And we will vote on that. In the meantime, there's really no reason why the Parks Board can't look at other options when they go forward. Sorry, my agenda disappeared here. There's been some other parks, like you had mentioned, Diane, that there's possibilities of, of bringing bike trails to those locations. So we just have to be careful that there are parks that are within our jurisdiction and our purview and not county parks, because there was some stuff that some people brought up county parks and items like that. We really.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about city-owned land or future city-owned land. And I'm talking about the city helping to bring the fill, to create the, the trails that are in Michael's email. But that there would be city involvement in that. We would not do it without you all, but it would be something where there would be time and equipment that would, you know. Right now, the reason this is a good place is because of all the kettles and, and drift, great glacial drift that's in that park. But you can create kettles and great glacial drift. Not real, but create the same effect and some, a nice trail. But we would do it with the Parks Board and the group.
Nope, and that makes sense. But let's, let's, it is different issue and great. What I'd like to see is us work on what's in front of them right now. And then there's nothing wrong with
Right.
putting together a, I don't know, asking them to put together a committee to look at other locations.
There are, I don't know how, what the adjective should be, but there are a lot of young people in Lake Mills who enjoy this sport. And we do things for other, we have the schools, maybe it'll even come under the school district because, you know, other things have. So maybe it's something we can work with together. But in the meantime, I'm in favor of letting them use what they have. I'm not happy that it's there and other people are not happy that it's there. And they feel, a lot of people feel that they got schnuckered because they didn't know it was coming. And I feel badly because that's, we all kind of got schnuckered.
Okay. So the way it stands right now is we'll ask you to work on your schedule to get that information back to us so we can take the motion off the table and vote on it. At this point, no changes are being made in the use of the, the trails. People can still use them as we, as, as they're built right now. And then after the vote, we'll go from there. After we get it back off table, we'll go from there. And it, it wouldn't hurt for us to look at other locations as a Parks Board. And that's something that we can push down to the Parks Board to ask you to look at some other places. We can actually specify some or you can take it upon your, your, your own thoughts as to where other bike trails may work in our community also. It doesn't mean we have to get rid of the ones that we have right now because they may work out great. And as Vicky's motion said, if, if approved, once it comes off the table, we would just look at it again in a year as far as those trails in Tyranina Park. Does that make sense for everybody?
Can I suggest that anybody who wants to talk to somebody about that, that they talk to Mr. Wilkie? Because that's who I've been talking to. And rather than going out and trying something, please talk to him first.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks, Rob. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for showing up and bearing with us on this. Item D, Resolution twenty dash thirty Waste Water Treatment Plant Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Can I get that title read, please?
Resolution twenty dash thirty authorizing the city manager and staff to submit the Lake Mills Waste Water Treatment Plant Compliance Maintenance Annual Report to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
I would entertain a motion of adoption for Resolution twenty dash thirty.
I move we adopt Resolution twenty dash thirty.
Thank you, Vicky. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Diane seconds it. Who would like to speak on this? I'm assuming Steve, this is probably more up your alley than the other folks.
It is. So the CMAR is a required maintenance report for the sanitary sewer and wastewater systems. And we have to submit it annually to the DNR. And what they basically do is score all the processes in the wastewater treatment plant to make sure that they're meeting the required standards. And if they're not, we have to tell them how we're going to fix it. So, and that's done as part of this resolution. Fortunately, as part of this resolution, it says that we're a facility and that we have no processes to improve at this time. That's kind of a misnomer because it recognizes that our wastewater treatment plant is thirty years old and is probably at the end of its life cycle in a lot of phases. And so we'll have to make some substantial upgrades in the near future. But as part of our next permit, we have to submit a facilities report and you will be receiving that shortly. The Public Works Board will review it and then, then you will get it. I, I anticipate we'll probably see it around November, December. But this is an annual report. It was good. It was approved by the Public Works Board and so I hope you approve it.
So I did see something in there that was a C. I can't remember which one it was.
Yeah, it's one of those.
We had one in there that I saw. Oh, there it is, the very first one. Foaming in the oxidation ditches.
Yeah, that was an issue that we had in, in the wintertime. And it had to do with an unusually high amount of protein entering the, which is BOD, entering the oxidation ditches. We had discussed that a little bit, that one of our manufacturers might have been providing us with some materials that, that caused that foaming and we were able to clear that up. They did install some additional equipment. It's still a potential problem all the time. But as far as that goes, it's been, we've corrected the problem at this point in time.
Okay, and so everybody knows this is basically a self-assessment that we have to do every single year. I can't remember if you mentioned that or not, but I just figured I'd throw it out there. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? Seeing none, let's call the roll call vote, please.
Diane?
Hi, hi.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Item E, Resolution twenty dash thirty-one, recognition and appreciation of service for Boyd Forrest. Can I get that read, please, the whole thing?
Resolution twenty dash thirty-one, in appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills and the Lake Mills Parks Board by Boyd Forrest. Whereas Boyd Forrest has served many distinguished years, with the City of Lake Mills Parks Board providing the City of Lake Mills with direction and insight into the responsible and appropriate management of the City of Lake Mills public parks and the Lake Mills Park System and has devoted numerous hours providing positive contributions to the City of Lake Mills and its citizens while exhibiting the highest level of loyalty and dedication. And Boyd Forrest civic dedication, attention to detail, constant professionalism, and ability to relate to, understand, and respond to the needs and desires of the citizens of the City of Lake Mills and the Lake Mills Park System has contributed to the betterment of the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and accomplishments of Boyd Forrest and extends best wishes and appreciation for his years of service.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion of adoption. Is it?
Second, second.
Got it? Diane was.
Playing game. I just missed who the second was.
Oh, Mr. Fields.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, let's.
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I also just personally, having been on the council while Boyd was on the Parks Board. And he's also participated in other activities over the years that are part of the Parks Board and has been a very worthy member of our community. And even though this is only recognizing that work, I just wanted to include all the other times you've done things above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you.
And I'm assuming you have something to say before we vote on this?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd just like to say on behalf of the City of Lake Mills, thanks for your, thanks for your dedication, dedication, Park Board. Also like to thank you personally, um, for all the encouragement, all the motivation, words of wisdom.
And words of wisdom that you've given me, you know, in my Parks and Rec position, um, since I've been here. Boyd has been one of the Park Board members that has, just occasionally calls me. He'll stop in my office, he'll see me on the side of the road, and he'll just come to talk to see what's going on with park issues, just general issues, just overall, see how things are going with me. One thing Boyd does too, over the course of the twenty years, and I've saved a couple of them, Boyd sends me cards. Boyd sends me notes of inspiration, he thanks me for the service I've done for the city. I think it's, it's great to have people like that in our community that just, you know, is out there looking to help, looking to be part of the community, encouraging people, all of that. I know Boyd's career in the public sector, I think that allowed him to kind of understand what my job is too, dealing with the public, dealing with public issues. Me and Boyd had a good link that way, he, you know, did that his entire career also. One of the things I'll always remember of Boyd is he had a, he had a saying at the Park Board meeting, and it came from the movie Field of Dreams. He said, "If you build it, they will come." So every time I see that movie, Boyd, I'm thinking of you. So, um, I really appreciate all the things you've done, not only for a Park Board level, but, but for myself. And so with that, I just want to thank you again.
It has been, uh, there's a saying in this town that says, Boyd, somebody tied his hand behind his, behind his back. I'm a hand person. Anyway, it's been a pleasure. It's almost like doing something once for twenty years as opposed to doing it twenty times. It, it never, it came about, my leaving was the fact that, uh, my wife and I decided to not go to Arizona for three months, we decided to go for four and a half. I, I just felt that there was somebody else, some new blood that should be sought out for the, for the City of Lake Mills. This, it'll, it'll never be our hometown because it can't be. I keep getting asked by people in Lake Mills, "Are you a native?" No. But I've only been here forty-five years. But that's not, if you're not a native, you, you were born here, so I, I can't, I can't claim that. But I can claim deep city and how it's grown. It stays, it stays small and it's also grown immensely. And I think, you know, you, you've changed every year, every three years or whatever. I gotta tell, I gotta still say thank you to Steve Wilkie. Done the same thing with him, just say, "Steve, you got five minutes?" And it turns into fifteen. I really enjoy that. And that's what I've enjoyed working with, you know, this gentleman here. He's a dedicated servant in the Parks and Forestry Recreation Area. Fortunate to have him. I know he's getting quote, "on in years," and there's a date there, probably waiting, whenever. But I'll be, I'll be at your party also, okay, sir? So, anyway, thank you very much for, for this particular honor. I appreciate it very much. And continued good service to all of you. You over here, Vicky, Jane, okay? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say before we vote on this? Nope? Okay, let's go ahead and do the roll call vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you so much for your, for your time. Okay. All right. Uh, item F, Resolution 20-32, can I get that read, please, the title read, please?
City of Lake Mills Resolution 20-32 Reduction of Financial Guarantee Tyroleana Point Subdivision.
I would entertain a motion of adoption for Resolution 20-32.
So moved.
Thank you, Diane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, so who has this one? Is Betsy's here, isn't she?
This is actually Dan.
This is Dan? Okay.
Yep.
I'll get one of these right tonight.
You're doing fine. Um, so this is with regard to, um, the kind of initial steps of Tyroleana Point, the Mud Lake Road, Highway A, new development. The financial guarantee, um, was for public infrastructure, the water retention area to the north of the development. It's a relatively small amount for, as financial guarantees go, they are, as the development expands, as they actually start building infrastructure and such, they're going to have other obligations to us with regard to financial guarantees for public infrastructure. But this is with regard to the water retention area to the north. It is by and large completed. The amount of the requested reduction is sixty thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven, um, dollars and fifty cents from the original escrowed amount of eighty-eight thousand, leaving a total of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents to remain in escrow. Based on the engineer's letter, um, that represents more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the remaining infrastructural improvements that need to go along with that area. So, the builder, the developer has requested this, uh, reduction to free up money and be able to, uh, go on and, um, do more with that money in the future. So, do you have specific questions about this reduction request?
I don't. Does anybody, Vicky, have anything? No?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call the roll call vote, please, then.
Mr. Fritsch? Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Aye.
Diane?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Ordinance, uh, sorry, item G, ordinance twelve fifteen. So, with this one, since it is over three pages, um, I'd like you to read the title, and then we'll go with the summarization of this for the first reading.
Ordinance twelve fifteen, amending chapter two eleven, utilities municipal, adding article three wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way. And then I think Dan's going to do the summary.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Steve. So this ordinance is with regards to, um, use of the public right-of-way and, um, use and placement of utility poles for small cell wireless five G infrastructure and wireless connections or connections to those poles generally. The ordinance itself was a, a template document that was prepared for MEUW, which the City of Lake Mills is a member. It is based on, um, Wisconsin statute sixty-six point oh four, one four three, the small cell wireless, um, statute in Wisconsin, which limits the scope of municipal authority over public right-of-ways and, and utility poles, public infrastructure, when there are interest in connecting and using those. Basically, the city can put in place, um, application fees that are provided for in statute. They can put in place, uh, reasonable lease rates, um, reasonable regulations with regard to the use, and connection fees generally. But it also provides for the framework and the process for getting, um, from application to actually connection and placement of such facilities. There is a very specific process that, um, the city has to abide by, that the contractors that are requesting the connections have to abide by. And if we don't, we run awry of, uh, Wisconsin statute, and, um, we can't do that. This is something that is very contemporaneous. Right now, five G is spreading like wildfire throughout the nation. Lake Mills is basically on the list, uh, it's coming this direction. This has been an ordinance that has been recommended for our adoption for a number of months, and it's risen to the top. It's, it's basically necessary now.
Okay. So, reading through this, I was trying to pick out some pieces and parts in there, and I couldn't really find them because I know that with, uh, five G, it's not just private companies like Verizon and the other cellphone companies that are going to have access to this. Businesses are going to be able to set up their own internal five G networks to their own business also. Does this cover any of that as far as bleed over between?
So my understanding, you're on the right patch, path here, but my understanding there is that they still have to go through some form of service provider, that someone will have to actually provide the signal that those, um, companies can then insert into their business operations to, to create a network. I don't believe, I, I believe that there has to be, um, you know, U.S. Cellular or Verizon or someone that's coming through that's setting up the five G infrastructure for that to be available.
Yeah, with the businesses.
Is that the question that you were asking?
Sort of. With the businesses, you can actually set up your own internal five G network into your building as long as you have the right spectrum proportion to you. But you can actually tie that into your, uh, LAN.
So yes, there is a public domain aspect to this, and I think that's what you're getting to.
Yeah. What I'm getting to is interference from a private company-owned, um, five G wireless that they want to use to run their corporation. So, they can have five G, uh, robots, five G lathes, five G packing devices, and then those all report back into their LAN, like you plug into a regular jack into the wall. But that's still, that five G can still cause interference with the public, uh, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and stuff like that. And I just didn't know if this covered any of that at all as far as responsibility and accepting, uh, interference.
No, not that I'm aware of. I mean, I've been through the ordinance multiple times, and that doesn't, the, the statements that I recognize from what you just said are more anecdotal from other research that I've done, from articles that I've read about it, and, um, kind of contemporaneous things that are going on with this development as it expands. This ordinance does, um, provide for liability waivers, but it's all focused on the municipality that's providing access to the right-of-way and specifically the poles that you're attaching to, that the five G entities are attaching to.
Yeah.
But, but the breadth of which you're, you're discussing, the breadth of uses is absolutely accurate. And this is, you know, really a game changer as, um, tech companies see it.
Yeah, it is, and it's going to change possibly how they build the tower out back if they ever do take advantage of that. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood the scope of this, and what this really does is provide a framework for how we can go about, um, collecting free use from those companies to give them access.
And regulations, yes. Yep. The, the, the small cell wireless, um, statute does limit the scope of, um, municipal oversight and regulation in this realm. It gives these entities that are engaging in this activity the right to attach to these poles in right-of-ways for the purpose of their business. The, the statute literally kind of diminished, uh, municipal authority over this aspect of their operations. But it does provide us with the ability to, um, put in place reasonable rules and regulations to collect reasonable fees for applications, for lease, et cetera, on these. So, um, it, the framework itself is really what's created in the statute. And there's very, very concise timelines that we have to abide by with regard to application and review and ultimate approval. There are, there's a range of, of fees that are provided within the statute, but there's other stuff that just simply isn't provided, and that's all reasonability language. You must have reasonable lease rates. I don't know what those are. I have a range based on what I know other municipalities are doing, but they don't dictate that exact amount for us. So there's some leeway, but it's, it's, it definitely limits municipal authority over this activity.
And just so folks understand, these small cells, they're less powerful than what you see on the poles up there today. And that's why there is a, a requirement for more of them all around our locations to provide full coverage because they're going to give you amazing speeds on your cell phones and your tablets and those devices like that. But the coverage is a lot less in distance than what you currently have today with your U.S. Cellular and Verizon, things like that, so.
That's well said. When we were in front of the Parks or the Public Works Board, uh, the other week on this topic, um, I did a quick Google search about what the range of this signal is. And I believe, if, if I remember correctly, that it's roughly two hundred meters from the actual cell tower, from the implement that's placed, which if you compare that to the huge cellular towers that are up right now, you can see the difference. But there will be more of these. You're exactly right. They're, they're batteries essentially.
Yeah, they'll be everywhere.
Everywhere. Essentially, they're going to be like telephone poles were.
Yeah, exactly.
You're going to have them about every hundred feet in a public right-of-way. So, if we go through and take all our poles down and put all our electric underground, they're just going to be putting poles up in their place.
Right. Exactly.
So what about the rural areas?
Yeah, they're going to end up staying four G for a while. So. Yeah, maybe. Okay. So that's the first reading. Is there any reason to expedite this? Or can, I think it should go through all three readings unless you think of a reason why we should expedite it.
We discussed it. There's, yes, um, there are, we're working with two companies right now that are looking for pole attachment agreements. I believe we have the authority to, um, engage in those agreements outside of this ordinance right now. But this, this is something that, it's, it's tops mine, it's contemporary, it's going to happen. So, um, pushing it forward is, is probably a good idea. I find, I find that it's, it's rather irrelevant to pass it now. We're here in three meetings, we could have passed it last month. The state's telling you, you're going to do it. And so if we wait three readings, we're still going to have to do it. I don't, it's like, you might as well pass it so that we can get working on the actual framework of the agreements and the, and do all the analytics to determine what we're going to charge and those types of things, how we're going to let them set poles.
Okay.
I, I have a question.
Do we have?
Go ahead.
Do we have to set the, the poles for them?
Or can they do that themselves?
That's a bit of a hybrid question. And if, if there are poles that are existing in a right-of-way, they have the right to access them. If there are not, we don't have an obligation to put up poles ourselves, but I, I believe that they're afforded the opportunity to do so, so long as it's done in a reasonable manner that kind of, um, meets the, the requirements that are put in place. There can't be discrimination, et cetera. But I, I, the infrastructure needs to be made available to them. They can put it up on their dime if it's necessary and if they need it. They have access to the right-of-way based on Wisconsin statute and eventual passage of this ordinance.
Okay. So.
So what I'm thinking is, is we just got done with road projects where we took all our poles down. So are you telling me now that because... So, are you telling me now that because of this, people are going to put poles back up again?
It is a very distinct possibility.
Exactly what's going to happen.
That's really sad.
Yeah, it's all part of their broadband initiatives that they're pushing.
Now, if we've taken the poles down, then they're going to have to pay to put the poles up?
Yes, that's all on their dime.
Yep.
Well, that's at least something.
If we have poles up, they'll pay us for the right to be on them. So, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. The, the issue is, is that we thought we were taking poles out and now we're, we're putting poles right back in in one form or another.
Yeah. Okay, so with all the conversations that we've had so far, does anybody want to move this past the second reading to the third reading to pass this this evening?
Go to this, to the, to bypass the first reading to the second, to the third. I don't mind that, but I don't want to pass it this tonight.
Okay.
I want to give people a chance to know what's happening.
No, makes sense.
But would you like a motion to suspend the reading, the second reading?
Not tonight.
No, I don't think we need to. I, I think we can leave it. And if we go to the second reading, we can, we can do it then. Sound good, Steve?
Yes, very good.
Okay. Okay, item ten, uh, future agenda items. We mentioned three of them. The Arlac financing for Mr. Fritch. The, ooh, I can't even read my, sorry about that. Uh, Johns for the recycling and then for TID eight. And then I'm assuming there's a bunch of other ones that are coming up.
There'll be the budget. There'll be all the items coming off of, uh, um, the Plan Commission Meeting. And I'm sure that we'll run into a couple of other items between now and then.
Okay. All right. With that being said, we are adjourned.